Oh say can you see By the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright lights and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the red hearts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The most bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet to wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Forward, march!
Color guard, halt! Order, come! Color guard, dance! Miss!
Let's give the color guards another round of applause. Now presenting our pledge of ethics will be Sarah Lee Rossam, our 8th grade student at the Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, School Number 29.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a member of Elizabeth Public Schools' professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place; listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting; speak in a calm voice and use proper language; judge appropriately for teaching and learning; inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes; care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness; be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you everyone, may not be seated. We will now present the core beliefs video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high levels.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, rigor means actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative.
We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue a post-secondary education.
It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of themselves and their students; is willing to challenge and be challenged, and pursues learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. Effective leaders impassion others, earning the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
The goal is only excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence. Our leaders will demonstrate an honoring will to contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe that a high-performing team produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect students' achievement. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national education agencies.
We will build a high-performing team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled dreams.
We will now have the swearing-in of the new board members. We are pleased to present to you tonight the board members elected by the people of the great city of Elizabeth. First, we're gonna call up Mr. Stan Naran. Stanley, to Bobby Ann. Stand on the Bible. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people so help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to a revised statute NJSA 19:4-1 that I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1 and that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so help me God. Congratulations, board members. Next, away. Congratulations, Mr. Naran, and you could please join us up here on the... The next newest member we will be swearing in tonight will be Mr. Jose Rodriguez. Who says we be in? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people so help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to a revised statute NJSA 19:4-1 that I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1 and that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so help me God. Felicitaciones. Congratulations, Mrs. Rodriguez, and to you and to your family. Welcome, Mr. Rodriguez. Now, last but not least, and certainly not the new school board member, one that many of you have known and have come to know over the years, one of our most passionate and dedicated members of the Elizabeth School Board, coming back for his third term re-elected, Mr. Carlos Trujillo.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to revised statute statute NJSA 194-1 that I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1 and that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Trujillo. We are all honored to have dedicated individuals on our team to continue the work which has already made Elizabeth Public Schools the best school system in the state of New Jersey and one of the best in America. Together, we will continue to provide these excellent educational experiences for all the students of the Elizabeth Public Schools. And now, we'd like to take this opportunity to present to each of the newly-elected board members with a certificate of election from the Board of County Canvassers as well as a letter of congratulations from the Union County Clerk's Office. We'd like to call up Mr. Stan Naran, Jose Rodriguez, and Mr. Trujillo. I'm gonna ask all the other board members to please join him out front. The Dr. Albert Einstein Academy Chorus, and they will be performing "What I Did for Love" by Marvin Pamas.
The Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to rural community newspapers, Star Ledger, and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on December 19, 2013. In addition, this notice is posted on the Bolton Board in the lobby of the Mitchell Building, 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general educational comment. And I'll call the role: Bachelors. Castillo. Gonzalez. Montero. Nazco. Neron. Pereira. Rodriguez. Trujillo. Now, I'm gonna ask for our Board Attorney, Mr. Lehman, to explain the rules for the election of Board Officers.
The Board is meeting tonight for the purpose of reorganization. The Education Act requires that at the organization meeting, the Board shall elect from its members a president and vice-president who shall serve for terms of one year. Nominations will be made from among the membership of the Board President voting, which means this is the majority of the quorum. When nominations are made, they do not require a second. However, in order to close nominations, there must be a motion to second, then a vote to close nominations for the office of president or vice-president. To conduct the election for president and vice-president, there will be the election of a president pro temp. And the same rules will apply for the voting process in that regard, and the election of the president pro temp will be conducted by the Board Secretary. President pro temp is elected solely for conducting the election of president.
At this time, I call for nominations for president pro temp.
Mr. Kennedy, I nominate Fernando Nazco, president pro temp.
Any others?
A motion to close the nominations, Mr. Kennedy?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, who's second. Seconded by Mr. Pereira. And I'll take the vote for the one nomination, Mr. Nazco. Bachelors. Castillo. Gonzalez. Montero. Nazco.
Abstain.
Neron.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Nazco's President pro temp.
Good evening, thank you. I am now hearing nominations for Board President.
Mr. Nazco, I nominate Tony Montero, Board President.
Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I move to close the nominations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, seconded by Mr. Pereira. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Baffalas.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero. This is just to close the nominations. Nazco.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Vote for the President. One nomination, Mr. Montero.
Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Baffalas.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Abstain.
Nazco.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Montero's the President. Nominations for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate, um, Elsie Ospina.
I second that, Mr. President.
Don't need a second, just nomination.
I'd like to nominate Charlene Baffalas, Vice President.
Second that? Second? Nope? Sorry. I move to, uh, close the nominations, Mr. Kennedy?
President, Mr. Tony, you're running this vote. Close the nominations.
Close the motion to close the nominations is made by Mr. Carlos Trujillo, seconded by?
No second.
Oh, there was no second needed?
No, there is the close.
This is to close nominations.
Second.
Second. Who has two second? Mr. Rodriguez, second the motion to close.
Roll call. Baffalas.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
We have two candidates for Vice President, Ms. Ospina and Ms. Baffalas, so we need to vote by me. Baffalas.
Baffalas.
Castillo.
Castillo.
Gonzalez.
Castillo.
Montero.
Castillo.
Nazco.
Castillo.
Neron.
Baffalas.
Pereira.
Castillo.
Rodriguez.
Baffalas.
Trujillo.
Castillo.
Mr. Castillo's the Vice President.
Thank you, and congratulations to all, to Elsie, Vice President, for the round of applause for everyone. I want to take this opportunity, as the new sworn President again, to thank everyone again here tonight, but before I get into my remarks, I want to take just two minutes to share with all of you my appreciation for the people who shared this stage with me, the Elizabeth Board of Education Members. They are some of the most remarkable, dedicated, and proactive people I have ever worked with. All of them are elected by you, the citizens of Elizabeth. They receive no pay, and they don't get any cars or any expense accounts. What they do get, however, is a lot of phone calls, all hours of the day and night. They attend numerous meetings that go into the wee hours of the morning, and they attend dozens and dozens of functions and events throughout the year. They do all this because they love their city, their community, and most importantly, they love the children and understand the importance of a really good education. They are the true definition of public service. With that, I want to welcome our new, two newest Board Members, Mr. Stanorah and Mr. Jose Rodriguez. I also want to congratulate my friend, Mr. Carlos Trujillo, on being re-elected to serve his third term on the Elizabeth Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Trujillo. We take our sworn duty to represent the interests of our children very seriously. Our school district has received many accolades throughout the years and has received the support of many reputable organizations like Rutgers University, Harvard University, the Brewer Foundation, the Panasonic Foundation, the Ford Foundation, and countless other organizations that have all committed themselves to the support, the work of our organization, helping our children achieve their full potential. I believe there are a number of reasons that we have been recognized by many of these fine national organizations and why we continue to show extraordinary progress from our schools. Our school board has been blessed with an extraordinary community of citizens that have been supportive of the changes that we have made throughout these years. This district is light years ahead of many urban school districts throughout our state, and as a board, we are particularly proud of having the opportunity of working with such a fine group of teaching professionals as well as a support team, members who day in and day out help to create the certain magic that we have here in our schools. The magic that I refer to is the end result of many of our children attending some of the greatest universities in our nation, and I am also very proud of the most recent change that this district has made with the unanimous appointment of our new Superintendent, Mrs. Olga Yugomire. Let's give her a round of applause. This Superintendent has been with our organization her whole teaching career and is able to carry forward the best of what we have been able to accomplish over the last eight years. She is already an accomplished leader in teaching and learning, and as Board Members, we are very fortunate that we have a great community, a great group of kids to educate, and I believe we have a dedicated workforce of administrators and union team members, all of us united for one just and important cause, educating the future leaders of Elizabeth. That is what I think about the most as I look across the room and the importance of leadership. I am happy that there are so many elected community leaders here today, because no matter where you stand in this political spectrum, I have to believe in my heart that if you are here tonight, you must care deeply about the future of our children, because I know we all do. Yes, the hours are many, the discussions we hold are intense, and the passion for excellence in education here in Elizabeth is extremely high. It's a journey I am certainly committed to you, to and I, I'm sorry, it's a journey that I am certainly committed to, and I invite everyone committed to the cause to renew their efforts to the cause this evening. I invite our Senator, our Mayor, and all our elected officials to please join us on this marvelous journey to bring about excellent experiences and services for our children here in the city of Elizabeth. It is the right thing for Elizabeth, and it is the right thing for all of our kids. Thank you all for being here, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I'm going to ask that we move to take a ten-minute recess so that the new Board Members, they'll be able to take pictures with their family members, and then we will reconvene after ten minutes. So move, thank you.